And I didn't get a chance to say thank you to all the presenters at our World's Best Workforce Meeting, so take that opportunity to do that now. Would someone like to move approval of the agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 That brings us to recognition of students, staff, and public. Is there anyone here that wishes to address the school board on an item that's not on the agenda?
Hi. Angela Bryant. I'm a parent and friend of students in the district. Just coming to follow up on my statements from two weeks ago. Since then, I've met more students and parents, and I've had the opportunity to sit in on a couple conversations along the way. And so, I just wanted to kind of follow up based on what I've seen. So one of the statements was, that I've heard a few times now, is the things that I spoke about last time are just a couple isolated incidents. The rest are rumors. So what I want to say about that is I think, in hearing that, you're not getting it, because it's not about the rumors. It's about the fact that there's a bigger cultural issue going on, and I'm aware that the district is moving forward with an equity assessment and a lot of other administrative things around training, and I think that's great. I think that's a great start. But the problem is, as I talk to more and more students, and many of them say they're not comfortable to talk to their administrators, because again, this is a cultural issue to the point where they don't feel you're going to take action on the little things, the rumors that are going on. I've had students in the last week tell me out of their own mouths that students who are Muslim, and many of the girls that are in their traditional dress, here's students walking behind them whispering things like terrorist, ISIS. There's students, again, that are continuing to share jokes among other students about deportation and the wall. There's other students that have people whispering the N-word, or even just using it very, just like it's nothing, in your schools. And beyond that, there's students at Jefferson that have shared that there's students that refer to an area in your school as the black wall, or the black corner. I don't think there's a place for that in our district. I really don't. I think until you deal with the cultural issue, they are rumors. They may not all be actionable offenses at a level of some kind of law, but it falls to the district to change the culture in the school. And I hope that your equity assessment will give you some guidance, and I hope that your meetings with the parent cultural groups that you're starting to meet with can give you some guidance. But I think this isn't one specific culture. It's not white on brown. You have students from all different cultures presenting against all different cultures. This isn't one specific group. But what I'm hearing, what other parents are hearing, is that you kind of have a problem at the cultural level, because nobody's standing and just saying, "This isn't okay. We're not going to have this kind of speech in our schools." I know that one of the things that was said is that there'd be a message that might come out with the end of the year message. I think that's great. I'm interested to see how that comes out. But not everybody reads that message, and so, again, I'm interested to see as we move into the new year, what the other plans are to affect change for the students in your district, in your schools. Because it has to go beyond a message that half of the parents probably aren't reading. I mean, I'm just going to be honest, they're probably not. So, with that, I'll just say, there's many people that I've talked to that are really looking forward to seeing where you're moving forward with this. I think you're taking some great steps, but I think you have a ways to go, from what I'm hearing from the kids. And I'm going to keep coming and sharing, and taking my two minutes, until the kids are saying that they're not fearful of these type of things anymore, because I think we owe them better than that. Thank you for listening.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who wishes to come forward at this time? No? Are there any students here from a government class? Just making sure. No? All right. Then we shall move on. Would someone like to move Part A of the agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Part A is our board business, minutes, field trips, grants. All in favor of Part A, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? None. Brings us to Part B, and our annual acceptance of the audit report, 2015-16. Rod Ziffkovich is here to lead that discussion.
Madam Chair.
Please.
Can I read this? "It be resolved the School Board of Independent School District 271 accept the auditors' reports from Turgon KDB Limited, which includes audited financial statements, audited financial statements of the student activity accounts, and accompanying communication letters for the fiscal year-end June 30, 2016."
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Our report.
Chair Barlata, Superintendent Fujitaki, board members. We're here tonight with the 15-16 audit. Matt Mayer is here, the partner that was on the audit. He'll talk through kind of the high points of the audit, and then be open to questions from the group.
Great. Thanks, Rod. Madam Chair, members of the board, Superintendent, thanks for the invitation to present tonight. You each received four documents in your package, which represent the final product of the audit, but for your benefit, and that of the audience here and at home, we have a PowerPoint presentation that will have the key points for us to review this evening. Our role as auditors is to come in at the end of the year, after the district has closed their financial books, and to test, examine, and give an opinion on those financial statements that are prepared, so that users of them can be assured that they are an accurate presentation of the district's financial position at the end of the year. We do that through an independent auditor's report in front of the financial statements, and this year, as in years past, we're providing an unmodified or clean opinion. That's the best we can give the district. Means that the numbers we're looking at tonight are a true and accurate picture of your financial position, as well as a true and accurate picture of the results of operations for the year. We're also required to do some compliance work. The federal government, first of all, wants us to make sure that you're spending the dollars that you receive from them appropriately, in accordance with the programs that you're receiving the dollars for. We do this on a rotating basis each year, and this year, we tested the Title II program and the Child Nutrition Program, and happy to report no findings with either of those two programs. And finally, the Office of the State Auditor here in Minnesota wants us to make sure you're following all the state statutes that apply to school districts in Minnesota. And again, if we have any findings or concerns regarding things like conflicts of interest, how you're depositing and investing your funds, how you're doing your contracting and bidding, we bring them out through that report, and again, we had none. So a very clean report for the 2016 audit of the three reports that I'm providing you this evening. All three are the best that I can provide, a clean opinion on the financial statements, and two clean opinions on compliance. With my remaining time tonight, I'd like to look at the numbers with you, and give you some perspective on how the 2016 school year went. And as always, I like to do that in the context of your general fund budget. As board members, you really establish the parameters for spending and how the district is supposed to be run for the year by establishing that budget at the beginning of the year. Once it's handed off to administration, it's their job to make that budget work and execute that budget, and then at the end of the year, we can evaluate the performance of your district financially in the context of that budget. If you recall, for 2016, you authorized spending down a fund balance, in other words, a deficit budget for the general fund, to the tune of about $4.7 million. And I'm looking at the second column there, the bottom line, the revised budget, a bottom line of a spending down of fund balance, $4,758. The actual results for the year came out a little bit better than anticipated. There was a deficit, but the deficit ended up only being about $2.2 million for the year or so. If we look at how that occurred, the place to look is under revenue. And if you look at revenue with me, you can see it was about $140 million for the year. That was about $4 million better than the district was anticipating. Now, one of those line items was federal dollars, and that came in under budget by about $1 million or so. I don't want you to be alarmed by that number. That really, when it comes to federal grants, you have the choice of how you're going to spend that, and when you're going to spend it. And if you don't spend it in a particular year, you can carry it over to the next year. And the vast majority of that $1 million variance in federal dollars was special ed, and the district decided to leverage special education dollars at the state level in lieu of the federal dollar. So as a result, you're seeing that the federal revenue is about $1 million lower than anticipated, but you're also seeing state revenue is higher than anticipated by about $4 million, almost $5 million. And within that $5 million amount is that special education from the state that was about $1 million over budget. The other portions of the state revenue were general education aid, which came in about $2 million better than anticipated. Enrollment was a little bit stronger than you anticipated, and also, some of the PSEO losses that you were having in Normandale College, you were able to retain those by actually executing some of those classes here within the district itself. The other number, then, is TRA in-kind contribution, and this was a number that wasn't in your budget. It's a contribution to the statewide teachers' retirement plan to the tune of about $1.7 million. The state of Minnesota is making contributions on your behalf to that fund, and we have to recognize that as revenue in your general fund, and also, an expenditure in the general fund. So, it's a number that wasn't in this year's budget. You may want to consider it for future years. It has to do with some of the new pension rules, and the new pension accounting that's out there, but that's the reason for that. So really, about a $1.7 million variance on the plus side, but that number is also done under expenditures, and that is where I want to end with you here. Expenditures show at about $1.3 million, but if we factor that TRA number out of 1.7, you actually came in under budget on expenditures for the year, underspent the budget by about $400,000. So again, you as a board authorized your fund balance to decline by 4.7 million. In the end, administration was able to execute on that budget by about $2.5 million better than that, and your fund balance only declined by about $2.2 million for the year. Here are those same numbers again, and it gives you some perspective on where your general fund balance has been, and where it lies right now. After about three years, right around $33 million fund balance, each of the past couple of years, you as a board have authorized deficit spending. You can see about a $6.5 million drop in fund balance in 2015, down to $26 million, and another $2 million drop in fund balance here in 2016, down to about $24 million. And we like to take a look at fund balance in the context of its components. You can see there are many components to fund balance. And the first component I want to look at with you is the unassigned number, which is the very last line, next, before the total. And you can see that number has been relatively stable. It ended the year just shy of $6.3 million. That's your unassigned, your discretionary fund balance. That's the one that you target for 5% at the end of each year, and that number, again, did come in at 5% for the 2016 fiscal year. But in order for that to happen, you had to start spending down some of your set-asides that you had had in prior years. One of those most significant set-asides is about halfway down the committed column there, under the column called operating referendum. When you went out for the referendum, you promised that you'd have a set-aside for a particular amount to ensure spending would occur at a particular rate over the course of the next, the past three or four years. And you can see, back in 2013, you had about a $10 million set-aside for that. You've leveraged those dollars each of the last couple of years here, and that pot of money is down to only about $1.3 million now. Another line item to be conscious of is the first line item, under committed for severance insurance benefits. And that one has always been about a $2 million set-aside that you've had for severance benefits. You utilized those dollars here in 2016 as well, and you can see no set-aside for that either. So, what's happened is you've been able to maintain your unassigned fund balance, the discretionary amount, at the levels that you've established, the 5%, but you've set it, the internal set-asides that you've had are starting to dwindle, and you want to be conscious of that. The other number is the restricted fund balance, and that's near the top there, and those are dollars that come from the state with strings attached. If you don't spend them on a particular purpose, you need to set them aside and spend them next year on that particular purpose. And you can see the capital projects levy and the operating capital levy both went up this year, so the restricted portion of your fund balance also went up. So, what fund balance going down, the restricted amount going up, it doesn't leave a lot left over for discretionary amounts. And that's most easily seen here. If we take a look at your fund balance as a percentage of spending, the unassigned amount ended the year at 13.3%. If we go back just to 2012, when you had that more stable fund balance of the $33 million, you can see your fund balance was about 27% of a year's worth of spending, and that's been cut in half, down to about 13%. Go back again to 2012, you can see the state average there in blue. You were exceeding the state averages back in 2012, 2013, and 2014 by about 3% or 4%. Last year, in 2015, you fell below that by about 3%, and here again, in 2016, you ended up at about a 13.3% fund balance. I'm anticipating the state average will probably be in the high teens for 2016, so again, you're spending down like your peers across the state, but at a much greater rate As always, the finances of the school are very much dictated on your student count, and I always like to just remind you of where you stand when it comes to that, to give you some perspective on that. And you had a high point back in 2012 of about 10,700 students living within the district boundaries. These are public school students, whether they attend here or not. You had enrollment losses, when it comes to the residents anyway, in '13, '14, and '15, and back in '16 here, you're back up to where you were about four years ago, at about 10,700 students or so. That's only about a 4 tenths of 1% increase over the prior year. Now, we know that open enrollment has to be factored in, and you've traditionally lost students to the open enrollment. And I've converted these numbers to pupil units, which includes the secondary weighting of 1.2, and you can see about a 1,400 student loss when it comes to open enrollment, and about an 800 pupil unit gain when it comes to open enrollment. So a net loss for the year of about 500 pupil units or so. About half of that loss, or about 700 students, is related directly to charter schools, and they're having a greater impact on your district each year, as we see these numbers increase when it comes to open enrollment losses. Your net loss, going back in 2012, was roughly 300 students, and again, here now, in 2016, about 500 pupil units or so. Revenue for the 2016 year was up about 4.3%. That represented enrollment growth, as well as the 2% increase from the state. About 70% of your revenue comes from the state of Minnesota, about 24% from local property taxpayers, and 6% from other sources, mostly the federal government. Expenditures for the year were very much kept in check. They were only a less than 1% increase when it came to spending 2015 over 2016. $141,000 in 2015, excuse me, $141 million in 2015, $142 million in 2016. And that is seen when we look at per pupil spending as well, and this, I think, kind of tells the story about what's been happening on the fund balance. In 2016, you spent about $13,559 per student in your general fund. Go back a year, it was a very similar amount, $13,555, mostly because enrollment increased at the same rate that your spending increased, about 1% or so year over year. Again, I'm going to take you back five years to 2012, and take a look at that number in 2012, it was $10,456. And look at that number in relation to the state average for the general fund, it was $10,553. You're actually under the state average on a per pupil basis by about $100 per student. If we fast-forward four years to 2015, to the year that we have comparatives for, you're seeing that you're spending $13,500 per student, and that is about a $1,700 number higher than the actual state average for 2015. So, four years ago, you were at the state average. One year ago, you're spending about $1,700 more per student than a typical district in the state of Minnesota. I want to wrap things up tonight by taking a quick look at your food service fund and your community service fund. These are operating funds of the district that have restricted revenue streams, and the activity is isolated in a particular fund to make sure that those revenues are dedicated only to that particular purpose. After a couple of years of deficits in the food service fund, you had a small surplus in 2016 of about $12,000, building on your fund balance to end the year at about a $1.1 million fund balance, up roughly about 20%, and that's a very solid financial position for your food service fund. The community service fund, this fund represents your community education programs, your ECFE programs, of school readiness, and programs like that. Each of those funds has their own individual fund balance, so taking a look at it in the aggregate here can sometimes be misleading, or the detail's really not there for you. But know that each of those individual funds did have a positive fund balance at the end of the year. In total, a $3 million fund balance, and again, if we do the math on that, that's roughly a 25% fund balance in the community service fund, so a very healthy position there as well. The individual positive fund balances for ECFE, for community ed, indicate that the revenue streams for those particular activities, excuse me, appear to be sufficient to cover the cost of doing business in those particular funds. I abbreviated my presentation, because I really wanted to key in on the budget piece at the beginning there. If you had questions about the long-term debt or the other obligations, be happy to backtrack on that, and be happy to respond to any other questions that you have, but I'll, I'll leave it at that for now.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Matt, nice to see you again. Nice to see you brought some snow with you too, as usually the case every year. Back in the expenditures per ADM served.
All right.
Couple of slides back. The fact that we have spent in 2015 twice as much in some of those areas as statewide average, now how does that relate to rural areas, and some smaller districts, and so forth like that?
Sure.
Has to be included, or averaged out that way.
There's a couple of things going on here that we want to be conscious of, and if you allow me, I'm just going to go through each individual one. I keyed in on the general fund to begin with, and let's use 2015 for the comparatives here. $13,555 versus $11,821. And we talked about that, it was some choices regarding the district had regarding spending, but also, you are receiving probably a little more special ed than a typical district would, you're receiving a little more compensatory aid than a typical district would, and your referendum, chances are, is a little bit higher than the average district as well. So you've got a little bit of liberty when it comes to that, to spend more than the state average goes. The food service fund, in a large district, we generally see economies of scale, and the per pupil spending generally ends up being lower in a larger district, and you're taking advantage of that as well. When it comes to community service, you have a very active community service here in Bloomington. It's something I think to be proud of, and is just a matter of what you want to offer the community, and what the community wants to leverage, and you can see, in the end, that you're about twice as active as a typical community service program would be in another district. And that's not necessarily a geographic thing, it just happens to be, excuse me, the offerings that you provide, and again, your community's interest in that. As I mentioned, you have a levy for that, an aid for that, and you also have fee for service for that, and those revenue streams are sufficient to cover the costs there, so I'm not concerned about that number in any way. Building construction, that has to do with facilities maintenance and long-term facilities-type maintenance expenditures, and you have some specific dollars that you receive from the state, that you've always received, and that the state is now providing to everyone else, and as a result, you've been able to spend and actually improve some of the facilities here as a result of that, $1,500 versus a typical district only at $982. This would also be your bond fund, so if you bond for construction costs, they're going to come out of this as well. So if you choose to incur long-term debt to improve facilities, it's going to show up here. And that takes me to debt service. The last couple of years, there's a little bit of an anomaly here. You took advantage of low interest rates in '15 and '16, and actually refunded some debt. And as a result, some of the debt principal payments are doubled up, and you're seeing numbers that are higher than they typically would be. I think we can go back to 2014, and you're probably close to what you're spending right now on a debt service basis, somewhere between $1,500 and $2,200 per student. Hopefully, that gives you some perspective. Is there anything I missed, or any other point that you wanted to?
No, that's good. I mean, people, every once in a while, say, "How much does it cost to, for a student?" You know, and I guess, if we really say $20,000, that's kind of a distorted picture.
It is. I would stay with the general fund number. I think that's the number to stay with. There's just too many variables when it comes to things like debt service, community service, and construction, that really are going to throw that off, timing differences and the like. I think the general fund is always one that you can compare to others, understanding and having the caveat that the funding is different, district per district, metro versus rural districts like you mentioned. And I think food service is also pretty easy to compare, but those other three, I would stay away from, that could be a one-year issue on each of them, so.
Director Leavitt.
I was just going to say, I had the same question earlier. I talked to Rod Ziffkovich, because I said, "Well, we're spending the same amount per student as a private college tuition per year." But, then we kind of walked through it, and community service is per student in a district, but the students that take community service programs aren't counted in that number. And so, I said, "Well, that doesn't make a whole lot of sense, that it has to be included." And then, same thing with like debt service. If you decide to pay off your debt in a bigger chunk, now all of a sudden, you're saying that you're spending all this money per student, where really, really you aren't. So I think it's important for people looking at this to understand that the main thing they'll get is a general fund, and not necessarily the total per pupil that's being sent, being spent, because it's not a real accurate picture of what we're actually spending on. I guess, when people, when I looked at this, I was thinking, "How much are we spending on the student?" Versus, what are we spending for all the additional things that we're doing and paying off debt? You know, if we decide, "Well, let's pay off $100 million in debt next year," now we're spending $100,000 per student, well, that obviously wouldn't be accurate. Correct?
That's fair. Fair assessment, yes.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Director Bennett.
Yeah, on the slide that is general fund expenditure allocation, it's got the little pie chart there.
Yeah.
I was wondering if you could give us some insight as to what possibly the other districts around here averages are on those?
Sure.
Are we very much in line with that?
You're very much in line, to be quite honest with you. What I typically see for instruction is high 60s to low 70% range, and you're right in that with the 69% number there. District and school administration usually ends up at 3%, 4%, or 5% at the districts that I work with, and district support the same. So you're right in the middle when it comes to those two, and you could see those as your administrative costs, the district office, kind of the overhead cost of running the district. Instructional support, that really can be considered a classroom expenditure as well. Counselors are in there, the media folks are in there, your classroom aides are in there. So really, if you add that to the instructional category, more than 3/4 of the dollars in your general fund are getting to the classroom directly, which is great to see. Pupil support generally is transportation. That's pretty much all transportation. Only about 8% of your budget goes to transportation, and then finally, sites, buildings, and equipment, and the other 8%, that's your utilities, the maintenance, and what it takes to keep the things running here, from facilities and building samples. Again, very much in line with the state averages there that I'm seeing.
Excellent. Thank you.
Anyone else? Harry, no further questions? Thank you, Mr. Mayor, for your annual intention. Let's vote on this resolution. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? None. Thank you. Next up, we have the committed funds. Someone like to move that resolution? Please.
It be resolved the School Board of Independent School District 271 approves committed funds in the area specified as follows. Shall I read all those committed funds and all their... Okay. So committed funds, one, $413,100 for third-party medical assistance. Number two, $90,965 for wellness dollars. Number three, $98,025 for band uniforms and instrument replacement. Number four, $1,323,054 for operating referendum. Number five, $1 million for transportation building. Number six, $870,188 for transportation bus purchase. Number seven, $3,761,142 for transportation. Number eight, $170,945 for athletics and activities. Number nine, $185,150 for staff development. And number 10, $700... Number seven, three million seven hundred sixty-one thousand one hundred forty-two dollars for transportation. Number eight, one hundred seventy thousand nine hundred forty-five dollars for athletes, for athletics and activities. Number nine, one hundred eighty-five thousand one hundred fifty dollars for staff development. And number ten, seven hundred forty-six thousand one hundred eighty-nine dollars for site department carryover funds.
Second.
Thank you. And our executive director of finance is still here to discuss this for us.
These are all the categories that are in the audit. The board has approved these categories back in June. These are the numbers that have been put in the audit for those categories that were approved back in June.
Thank you. Does anyone have any questions for Rod?
Yeah, I got a question. Last year when we did the budget, you had said that we're no longer going to be differentiating the transportation funds and the general fund, so why are we still doing the number seven then? Can you explain that a little bit?
We are just, all we're doing is we're just designating where those fund balances are. We're still internally looking at it as individual. I think it's managing it that way, but what we're doing is when we do a comparison to the, for the long-range financial planning, we have both the revenue and expenditures for transportation along with these three fund balances in those numbers.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Okay. Anyone else? Hearing no further questions. All in favor of this resolution, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? None. Next, we have up the final 2016 payable 2017 property tax levy. Would someone like to move that resolution? Please.
Chair. Be resolved, School Board of Independent School District 271 approves the proposed final property tax levy for the 2016 payable 2017 levy of fifty-one million five hundred and forty-five thousand two hundred and fifty-one dollars. Be further resolved that in the event of any changes to levy amounts by the Minnesota Department of Education, it is the intent of School Board of Independent School District 271 to levy the appropriate amount as allowed by law.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Rod has a presentation.
So tonight's presentation is to give the board the information regarding the final levy certification. There is a two-part to this process. It's the truth and taxation part, which includes both a budget update and then also the actual levy information part. At the end of this presentation, I'll turn it back over to the board chair to ask if anybody in the public is, has any questions regarding the levy itself. So as we mentioned in the preliminary levy, it's good news overall for the homeowners. The value of homes went up two-point-eight percent on a median-priced home. Taxes on the county and city and school district went down on that median-value home by fifty-eight dollars or two percent. The school district went down by thirty dollars or three-point-four percent. Kind of looking at the percentage of increases that each of the different municipalities did, the city was a seven-point-seven percent, the county was a four-point-two, and the district was a two-point-six. This is the second year in a row on a median-sized home that the district has reduced. We went down in seven dollars last year. The pledge we made to voters back in 2013, when we got the increase for the capital projects levy for technology and security, we're showing that in this levy process, we have upheld that promise with a zero percent increase in the non-operational levy. So the overall truth and taxation process is that the district submitted back in June thirtieth information to the county. The county then prepared tax statements that went out to the homeowners in November. Tonight, we have the truth and taxation hearing along with a budget update, and then the board is asked to certify tonight, and then into the new year, the county issues the actual tax bills. Back in September, we got our first information from the state. The board approved the preliminary levy on September twenty-sixth. We submitted it to the county by the thirtieth. As I mentioned, the county mailed them out, and tonight is the decision for the board of certifying the final levy. So if we look at the first part of the truth and taxation, it's talking about budget. The sixteen-seventeen budget is broken out into multiple categories. If you look at the general fund, which includes transportation, technology and security levy, and then capital funds, operating capital, we have food service, community services, building construction, debt service, and then our trust funds, and then our internal services. If you look at the overall, we budgeted one hundred and seventy-three million dollars, expenditures of a hundred and eighty-five point six million, or deficit spending of twelve-point-five million dollars for the sixteen-seventeen school year. Looking just at the general fund, expenditures of a hundred and thirty-nine point two, expenditures of a hundred and forty-one point one, or a one-point-nine million dollar spend down. So if we look at the sources of those revenue, just as was brought up in the audit, we look at fifty-eight percent of our dollars, and this is again, the bigger picture, not just the general fund, state aid of fifty-eight percent, property taxes twenty-nine percent, federal, too, food service, two percent, and then tuition and other fees, seven percent. And what's included in the state is all state formula, special ed, other revenues. You look at their property taxes, all the different categories within the referendums. Now, if we just look at the general fund itself, the general fund, sixty-eight percent is state aid, property taxes twenty-five percent, three percent for federal, and four percent for tuition and other fees. If we go to expenditures by program, you can kind of see the breakdown within the programs, and as mentioned before, you look here is as a overall district, we're looking at thirty-five percent is regular instruction, one and sixteen, so you're looking at fifty-one, fifty-two percent of the overall district spending is in instructional classroom. And then if we look at it just as the general fund itself, you see that general instruction is forty-six percent, one percent for vocational, and twenty-one percent. So we're at the sixty-seven, sixty-eight percent, very similar to what we were in the last audit. So now, as we move on to the second part of the truth and taxation is the actual proposed property taxes. You look at those five major categories within, referendum, referendum other, which is equity, community services, debt service, and then other. If we look at a referendum levy, our referendum is going up one-point-one million dollars of current year. The main reason for that is the increase of enrollment. Matt mentioned some of that already in the audit, that we had an increase in enrollment, prior-year adjustments of another five-hundred-and-twelve thousand, or one-point-six million dollars, or three-point-one percent. If we look at equity, the first part of equity revenue is the comparison of the disparity between revenue, between the highest and lowest revenue districts within a regional basis. Ours is actually going down slightly at thirty-seven thousand dollars, or three-point-five percent, but the next two areas are all driven by enrollment, so that's why you see the board approved going up a hundred and sixty thousand dollars, the location equity going up two-hundred-and-twenty-six thousand dollars, and then prior-year adjustments going up sixty-seven, or a four-hundred-and-sixteen-thousand-dollar increase, or four-point-five percent. We go to community services. The increase in community services is some of the adult education programming that it's dollar-for-dollar reimbursement has gone up over the last couple of years, and that's where you see the ninety-seven thousand dollar increase of six percent overall, showing a six percent increase within community services. Debt service, a slight decline, kind of what Matt was mentioning. We've done some refunding to save the district money, showing between the pay sixteen and pay seventeen, the actual principal and interest going down six-hundred-and-fifty-three-thousand dollars, or six percent. Prior-year adjustments are pretty much flat, and then the overall is six-hundred-and-thirty-three-thousand dollars down. The last category of other is pretty much flat at the two-hundred-and-eight thousand dollars. What is in that category is your capital projects levy, your all-facility pays-you-go, your safe schools levy, and those areas there. So overall, it's showing that we had a levy last year of fifty million three hundred thousand. This year, we're showing fifty-one thousand, fifty-one million five hundred thousand, or a change of about one-point-three million dollars, or two-point-six percent. As mentioned before, if you're looking at it, operating referendum piece, the largest increase here we're looking at was a two-million-dollar increase, mainly due to our increase of enrollment between the two years. Our non-operational is flat, and then the other category, due to the refinancing and the rest, is going down seven-hundred-and-seventy-six thousand, or fifty-six thousand dollars for the one-point-three million dollar increase, or two-point-six percent. And again, it's just showing the change between the two years of property tax on a medium-value So at this point, I'll turn it back to the board chair regarding any public comments.
Thank you. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to come forward to speak on the truth and taxation? No one's coming forward. Thank you. We shall not vote on this resolution. Oh, do you have a question?
Going back to the equity levy slide, there it is. The board approved three hundred dollars per unit. That's not in a referendum approach. That's something that we do based on the legislative law or whatever?
It is part of the referendum question that you would have out there. The board has the opportunity to do a resolution for three hundred thousand without going out to the community. What we did when this law came into place about three years ago, the board approved a resolution that they would do the three hundred thousand, or three hundred per pupil for the time of the referendum, as long as it was in place, the current referendum. So I would say if, when we go out for a new referendum, we would have to do this resolution at that time also.
Yes.
Once again, on this question, I had called Rod Zibkovich earlier today to talk about it, and I said, "How is it that we're getting more money, but the property taxes, the amount that we have to pay is going down?" I said, "Not that I'm complaining. Anytime we can go to the voters and say, 'You know what, we lowered taxes,' that's great, but could you speak to that a little bit?" Our conversation.
There's a couple of items that are causing the overall to go down. The biggest piece is that the TIF for the Mall of America, there's two pieces came off. The first piece came off this year, which affected the overall tax capacity, not on the operating referendum piece, but the overall taxes. The second area is that, as you saw within here, is the overall market value went up two-point-eight percent. So between those two aspects are probably two of the biggest reasons for that shift.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, what I had called, I just wanted to make sure it wasn't an error in what we were reporting, so thank you for clarifying.
Thank you. Any other questions? All right. Hearing none. All in favor of the final 2016 payable 2017 property tax levy resolution, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? None. Thank you. Next, we have approval of the guiding change document for right-sizing the budget 2017-18. Would someone like to move that? Please.
Be resolved that the School Board of Independent School District 271 approves the guiding change document for right-sizing the budget, too.
Second.
Thank you. Rod?
This is a resolution, or at least a document that we brought to the board back in September. The board had some discussions about it and wanted to hold off till December to approve the document and also talk about it further. Based on what we've seen in our overall, we felt that presenting the document as is at this point in time and just looking at it for the seventeen, or the eighteen, the seventeen-18 budget, without any changes, would be the way to go. As mentioned to the board before, we originally were anticipating right-sizing the budget of about two-point-five million dollars. Our most current look at it, it's going to be at least half that. So, and we will be coming to the board in January with that information, but at this point in time, I know there are some categories on here that the board might want to look to remove as we move into the future, especially depending on impact of referendum in the future. But at least at this point in time, I would say that we would, the recommendation of administration is to hold with the current guiding change document, and that the board can, in a retreat after the first of the year, can discuss more what it would be for future years moving out.
Does anyone have any questions?
That was, that was my basic question was, this is for this time and effort, this guiding change document, we can revise as we continually right-size the budget as we go along. Right? Thank you.
And Ralph?
Yeah, that's my question. So we have this retreat in February, and we talk about more possibly long-term financial concerns with the district and concerns with funding, and I guess you could say what will come in. Then if we decide at that time to change this, is that something we can still do, or are we saying that we're going to stay with this for this whole year? Can it be fluid?
All this is helping us to help develop the budget itself for the seventeen-18 school year. At any point in time, the board can bring up or bring, ask us to bring the guiding change document back, and the board can change it at any point in time.
Okay. Do you have a question?
I just want to, I just want to make a point for people that are listening. The things that we're discussing that are on here, it says, "We will not violate the law, agreements or policies, will not increase safety risk, will not close schools, will not sell district property, will not consolidate two high schools into one, and will not put in jeopardy any targeted state federal funding for mandated programs, for instance, special ed integration, et cetera." In our discussion in September, the concern is that several of us, myself included, would like to, in order to have discussions about future finances, would like to remove some of the items, including closing schools, possibly selling district property, and consolidating high schools into one. So those are all things that if we have long-term conversations in February, I would like to be able to include in the conversation. So I guess I'm willing to say, yes, maybe we have to come back if that's part of the conversation in February and change it then if we need to.
That'd be fine.
All right. Go ahead.
One of the things I saw on here is if, if we're going to, I think last time we published this, we said, "This is our guiding change document that we're working with." One of the things is right now, currently, the declining enrollment isn't an issue for this year, and so if we're putting this out there, we might want to put clarifying language, either take that bullet point off or say uncertain enrollment, I think it'd be more accurate to say, because sure, we're up ninety students this year, but ninety students is not, out of ten thousand isn't a lot, and so it could change quickly. So that was my, my thing when I saw this. The other thing is, and maybe this will be part of our discussion for the retreat, I don't know if we've already had discussions about this, but one of the unacceptable means I was thinking of today was that we should consider not lowering hiring standards. I know that for a lot of districts, to balance budgets, they'll say, "Okay, we're, you know, we have fifty teachers that retire every year," or whatever the number is, "And so we're only going to hire..." whatever the number is, and so we're only going to hire first and second year teachers instead of the most qualified candidate. So that might be something that we would want to have a conversation about, if that's one of the methods we want to use or not. When we replace retiring teachers, do we want to, if someone applies and they have 10 years experience, do we want to pass them up because we need to balance the budget? So I don't know if we need to have the conversation now. It sounds like we're coming back to this in a couple of months. That was, that was it for me.
One of the items I want to respond on, the declining enrollment, realizing enrollment can change very quickly. So I guess it's, how I see the why is if enrollment declines, we would need to do additional right sizing the budget. Whatever we come up with a target or start building the budget, there's going to be a lot of unknowns this year. The legislature is, you know, is having a governor that's Democratic and Republican in both the houses. It could be a longer session that we won't know what's, what actually is the impact. So I think that the unknowns are still out there, that I wouldn't want to make the assumption that we're, our enrollment is going in a top, you know, moving upward.
Well, and I think in our last conversation, we said, well, this increase, we're only really sort of counting on it for a couple of years because the kindergarten class is small and the main increase was in high school. I think for someone reading this, when we originally wrote that, we were down like 200 students from two years prior. And so that, that's, you know, that's all I was saying on that is maybe if we need to clarify it or not.
Okay. Director Bennett?
To what Rick was saying about the declining enrollment, I was going to mention as well because our auditor just told us our four-year average, that we're slightly up. So it's not just a one-year fluctuation. So I don't know if we wanted to change that to declining or flattened enrollment, just to throw that in there. Just because when, when people see this, as you know, Rick has said, you know, we have, we're increasing enrollment. And if you look at our four-year average, we're flat or increasing. So it's really disingenuous, say, declining enrollment when we're really not declining enrollment.
The issue is.
What did he say?
Today.
For the past four years.
The only thing I would say to that is that we don't know until enrollment comes in if we're declining or up. And we don't know until we have the kindergarten count that we could be down from last year for 1718.
Okay. And I think, you know, Rick brought up a good point about the, we're not going to lower our hiring standards because I think we, we don't do that, but I think we've heard some of that conversation in the community that, well, we're only hiring first and second year teachers and we're only hiring teachers with, with, you know, bachelor's degrees, which isn't true. When you look at the hiring, when we look at every month, we get a report of who's being hired, you can see on there, you know, step eight, step 12, lane six. So we're hiring these teachers that aren't fresh out of college. And so I think that might be something that we might consider adding to, so people know that we're not only taking, you know, fresh out of college teachers. Also, when we talked in September, one thing that I, I wanted to add on there, and we didn't, I don't think we had consensus to it, but it was that for me, unacceptable, unacceptable would be any freeze in salaries for the next negotiation session, for this current and next negotiation session. I don't think that we should be freezing the salaries of any of our employees. And that's, no, teachers, para is everybody. So I don't know how everyone else feels with that. If that's something that they would be willing to add to this or something we want to talk further at the retreat in February or what your thoughts are.
Discuss, to be discussed in February. Let's go over the round and then come back to you.
Just quickly for the, for the why part, under enrollment, you might just be able to get away with keeping enrollment on there and, and striking declining. So enrollment just has a more nebulous definition, but it's still there. I think this is a good template to begin that conversation. Don, you were talking about, you know, can we, can we massage it? Is it fluid? I always saw this as something that's fluid, that we can change, that we can go in and, and respond to more than react. Hopefully, it would be, you know, a measured response and thoughtful conversation. But I think that Tom brings up a good question, and that'll add to the conversation in our, in our retreat. I think, you know, everything should be available to be put in the middle or taken out of the middle. But I do think we need more conversation.
We shall have it. Go ahead.
Yeah, I would just, I would just support it as is now because when we get the retreat in February, we're going to have a lot more information about what the legislators are going to do or what their proposals are going to be. So I think it's a little premature to make any kind of adjustments now until after, after February. So I would support just leaving it as it is and opening it up for conversations, of course, at the retreat.
Thank you. Director Bennett?
Well, since it sounds like we want to have more conversation once at the retreat, then wouldn't it be better to just table this until after the retreat so we can have a better conversation or either that or approve this, but with the understanding that we're going to come back after the retreat to, with opportunity to amend?
I think they're just looking for approval of this so they can move forward with their budgeting.
Yeah. But that's what I'm saying, or we can have an understanding that we're going to come back.
That is the understanding.
Okay.
And that's why it was mentioned that it's just for the 1718 year budget.
Okay. Any other questions? Hearing none. All in favor of this guiding change document, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? All right. Would someone like to move the next resolution, explore options for the current operating referendum?
Madam Chair, be resolved that the school board of independent school district 271 directs administration to explore options with respect to our district's current operating referendum.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you.
We had this discussion last December about the referendum. As everyone knows, we have one more year after this year, the 18, 19 years, the last year of our referendum. So we really have two more time periods to renew or go out for the cap. That would be the fall of 17 or the fall of 18. So I guess what this is, is just to give the district the opportunity to start looking at different items within that we need for research, and then to come back to the board at that retreat in February with the information that we found.
Any other questions or comments? Go ahead.
I think this is the right move. Takes a while to get this conversation going and to give our okay to the, to the district to look into this is, is appropriate.
Thank you. Anyone else? Hearing no further discussion. All in favor of this resolution regarding the referendum, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed?
Thank you.
Next, we have a resolution regarding high school graduation fee for 2017. Would someone like to move that resolution?
Madam Chair.
Please.
Be resolved the school board of independent school district 271 approves the graduation fee of $60 per student for Kennedy and Jefferson High School for the 2017-18 school year.
Second. Assistant Superintendent Eric Melby is here to give us some background.
Chair Bartolata, Superintendent Fujitaki, and members of the board, pretty straightforward. We're recommending keeping graduation fees at $60 per student for this year. That's no increase. Last increase, I think, was 2013. But moving forward, what we're looking to do is to stack the graduations again. That was done a couple of years ago where you had back-to-backs on the same evening. It's a.
I like that.
Yeah, I see people shaking their head. You remember that well. But it will be quite a cost savings for, for the district moving forward after this year if we do do that. So district, or district administration recommends approval of the maintaining of the $60 fee.
Okay, we'll start on there.
So of the $60 fee and the fees generated from this, how much of the overall expenses are covered? It's covering everything? Is it covering 80%, 90%?
I don't know the exact percentage. It doesn't cover everything, though. The district has to supplement.
We have to be careful.
I can get that for you, Director Bennett.
I don't know if it's like a couple thousand dollars or.
I can give you, the board an email update on it, yeah.
That'd be great. Thanks.
Rick?
For our high school representatives that are here, that they can go report back to their respective schools. Every time we, this would come up at our pathway, or not pathways, at the student advisory council meetings, they'd always say, well, what are the graduation fees for? So if it's not covering caps and gowns, could you just go over that a little bit? And I was going to ask them, do you think we should maybe raise the rates a little bit or do you think you're good with $50?
I don't have the problem yet.
Ethan says it's not his problem yet.
You know, we like to make sure that families are able to attend the graduation ceremony with, with as many people as they want to bring to the graduation ceremony. Therefore, we do hold ours at the, last year and this year, Mariucci Arena at the University of Minnesota. So the costs really cover the, the facility use.
It's a nice venue.
For those that haven't been there.
Versus if we did it at the high school or in the gymnasium now, you can only bring one guest or something like.
Yeah, and if you do it at a football field, for instance, at the stadium, you're dependent on the weather. And if that's poor, then you're really limiting the number of people that can attend onsite at the ceremony. You can do a separate location with video feed and things like that. Other districts do do that. But we, we, we value being able to have all family members attend graduation ceremonies.
Jim, did you have a question? Are you good?
No, I just, I just was going to sympathize with graduating seniors having to pay.
Go ahead.
I just wanted to say thank you that, you know, it's nice that the district realizes that even though it doesn't cover all of the costs and that we're picking up, the district's picking up the rest of that cost because, you know, $60 is still a significant cost to many of our parents. And especially when you had twins like me, and it was doubled. So it's still, you know, a significant cost. So I appreciate that you're not raising the fees because I think that, you know, that's, that's another hardship for many of our families. So thank you.
Appreciate that. It was a robust discussion about it, and that's what led to thinking ahead, not this year, but the next year, of maybe doing things differently to save some money. But it is, it is a burden for, for many of our.
Go ahead.
You said, moving forward, we're going to stack the graduations. This is for the 1718. So you're talking 18, 19 school year? We'll probably have both graduations on the same night?
Right.
Is what you're thinking? Okay. But next year, or the 1718, it'll still be two separate nights? Okay. Trying to think two, year and a half, two and a half years in advance, trying to keep them straight.
Well, you're talking next.
Talking about actually, to clarify, students, this graduation this year, $60, and then moving forward, 1718 school year would be stacked.
But we're, we're approving the fee for $60 for 1718.
For the graduation in June 2017.
Which will be two separate nights?
I think this is written.
This is for graduation fees for the 2017, 2018 school year, it says.
Yeah, so that's, would start next year. So this should actually say the proposed rates will be effective for the 2016-17.
Right. Sorry.
So there's probably a moment that.
So should we?
Well, the resolution didn't have a year in it. Well, actually, it says for the fee changes.
All right. So we need to amend the resolution.
So I move to amend the resolution to change the date to 2016-17 school year.
Thank you. Thank you. Now let's vote on the amendment. All in favor of the amendment, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No. So now we will vote on the resolution with the amended language in it. All in favor, please signify by saying aye. Anyone opposed? No. That was easy. Thank you. It's Rick. That doesn't happen. That doesn't happen.
This was a busy week because I think the Early Learners Academy, in the background, we got to change that one to 1617 also.
Would someone like to move this resolution regarding community service program fees? Please.
Sure. Reserve that, result that the school board of independent school district 271 approves the proposed fee changes for early learners academy.
Second.
Thank you. Tamara Su, our executive director of community services, is here.
Good evening, Chair Bartolata, Superintendent Fujitaki, and school board members. As stated in the resolution, early learners academy is proposing a fee change. And as stated in the resolution as well, it is still competitive with other program services in the area who are providing a preschool embedded and daycare program. So that was two years ago when we had the last increase. So we, as, as you can see, it's a slight increase in all of the areas except for the registration fee. Any questions?
Jim, just quickly, it just looks like for the five days a week, it's up 10. Three days, it's up seven. And all families, two days, it's up five. Is that right?
That's correct.
Yeah, okay. Just for the folks that are watching at home that don't have this in front of them.
Director Bennett?
So are these increases in part because the, the program's not self-sustaining? So that needs to generate more revenue or is it just to keep up with the, the market area?
It's to keep up with the market area. It is a self-sustaining program. But in that, as in other programs and community services, when we have self-sustaining programs, we use that to subsidize other areas of the program to support our services. But in this particular increase, again, it's keeping up with the services around us. So, and we don't see it as a hardship for families. And, and then we need to continue to invest in training and PD. We're trying to work towards having more combined training and professional development with early learning services. So all of that will again go towards the robust program that we have and continuing to develop our services.
Okay. And are, for this program, are there any scholarships available or sliding fee or is it just pretty much the?
This is as it states, but again, but looking to the future, we are looking at, could we do things differently? Again, being more embedded with early learning services and possibly having those opportunities for scholarships.
Thank you. Any other questions? Hearing none. All in favor of the program fee change, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No. Thank you. And Tamara Stank, Metro South Basic Education Consortium agreement. Would someone like to move that resolution?
Madam Chair, be resolved that the school board of independent school district 271 approves the joint powers agreement for the Metro South Adult Basic Education Consortium between independent school district 271 Bloomington, independent school district 272 Eden Prairie, independent school district 273 Edina, and independent school district 280 Richfield. The term of this agreement is from the date of authorization of each respective member's school board to June 30th, 2018.
Second. Tamara?
Thank you. As stated in the resolution, this is renewal of the joint powers agreement for Metro South Adult Basic Education. This is a, going to be now an annual renewal moving forward. It's a basic renewal. So I'm up to you. Are there any questions?
Madam Chair, as opposed to an annual renewal, it's till 2018, would that be a two-year?
It's, well, technically a year and a half. The reason that we're coming early to the board for the renewal is that in the past, this has been a three to five year renewal process. The state has required us to go to an annual renewal. So we're making that move. And the second reason for coming a little bit early and changing everything is that there's a new process in adult basic education called the recompete process. And we're still learning as to what that actually means and when the deadline will be. So one of the requirements is that we have a annual agreement with our consortium. So we're trying to make sure we have everything aligned. So as we learn more details about this recompete process for federal funding, our application is ready to go. And because we're dealing with four school districts approving it, again, it's just trying to be a little proactive here. So we are all set for the process.
And that's good. This is quite a document. In all my years, I don't recall seeing a document like this before. I'm sure there was one, but because it was, like you say, more an informal one, but three to five years, as they kind of did, it was verbal or whatever it is. But I, I, I think it's really good to have it spelled out this way. Joint powers agreements are always susceptible to members wanting to pull out or to want to have something changed. So it's good to have this all down in writing this way. And I guess I thank the attorney and the insurance. And I guess I thank the attorney and the insurance company for making sure that we have this. One of the curious points is there is a board of members of each of the districts. Now, is that an appointed member? As a school board, we don't have to have a representative on that board. That's usually something that's done through the directors or whatever of the education groups in each of the districts, right?
This has traditionally been the four consortium community education directors, so that's what that board, and we meet quarterly.
Any other questions? Comments? Hearing none, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? None. Okay. Richfield Public Schools partnership dissolution. Would someone like to move this resolution?
Madam Chair?
Go ahead.
Be resolved that the School Board of Independent School District 271 accepts the notification from Richfield Public Schools Superintendent Steve Yuanowski that the School Board of Richfield Public Schools has taken action to dissolve the partnership with Bloomington Public Schools effective July 1, 2017.
Second. Thank you. I think we've all read the background here on this. Not really much to discuss, but if anyone has anything they'd like to comment?
Well, it might be worth noting for the listening public that it is official, and we've been talking about this for the past couple of months, that they might vote to solve a relationship, well, that they have, so we're no longer going to be in a partnership with Richfield for our early childhood education.
Thank you. Yes.
And community.
I just wanted to say thanks to Richfield for 14 years of partnership. Served a lot of kiddos in that time and managed to work together successfully, so I just publicly want to say thanks.
Thank you.
And I did have a chance to watch the Richfield School Board meeting on December 5th, and I want to compliment Tamara and Carol Hutner for being over there at the school board meeting, sitting in the front row through the long enduring process of talking about how they were going to go out on their own and thanking, they thanked Bloomington for the years of support too. So it's going to be an exciting and an interesting process that they're going to go through and that we're going to go through also.
So did they vote on it unanimously?
Yeah, all six of them.
Six of them.
Beware of ties.
Anyone else? Questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Who would like to move the resolution regarding the Bloomington Advocacy Council's new member?
Be resolved that the School Board of Independent School District 271 approves John Anderson and Addie Matson as members of the Bloomington Advocacy Council, BAC, for the 2016-2017 school year.
Second.
Thank you.
One of you two like to say anything?
Second.
Oh, I think somebody did second, but, oh, yeah.
This is, I'll just say that this is some of the people we were still contacting in a way to hear back from our, that were on our list after our last meeting when we approved the rest of them, so those are just two additions.
Okay. Thank you. Any discussion about it? Please?
Another quick word of thanks for the team putting this together so quickly. This was, it's not easy to do. It's nice to see we had so many people step up, and they said yes. So thanks so much for doing this work.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That brings us to our board member reports, and before we begin, I think we'll start with the students. I'm not sure who we started with last time, but...
I can go.
Okay.
Okay, here's a short update on what's happening here at Jefferson. Last week, we had our first food drive of the year, and we raised over $3,000 and 1,002 items, which equals to one ton for Veep. Student Council is starting to plan our Sadie's Hawkins Dance, which will be later this winter. Senior Ian Klein advanced to the National Debate Tournament, which will be in June. Tomorrow, there's a band concert at 7:00 PM at Jefferson. January 9th, there will be a town hall meeting to discuss everything going on at Jefferson. January 14th, the show choir will be performing at the spaghetti dinner that they are hosting. Most winter sports are now in full swing. And lastly, groups of students and teachers are meeting and brainstorming to talk about a media center project they are hoping will bring new learning experiences.
Could you just repeat the dates?
Yeah. January 9th, there's like a town hall meeting, and then Jan...
Can I just ask, is that going to be in the evening or during the day, or...
I think it's going to be in the evening, so parents can go too. I think that's what Mr. Anderson said.
Okay.
And then January 14th, there's a spaghetti dinner that show choir is hosting, and then they'll be performing at that.
Okay.
And then the band concert, which is tomorrow.
Thank you.
Can I ask a quick question before we get on to the town hall? What is there any topics that that's surrounded by, or is it just open forum?
He just said, like, he wants to inform, like, students and parents about kind of everything that's been happening, like, in the school. He didn't really give any details, though.
Okay, so kind of like just an open forum?
Yeah.
People that have questions, they can just come and ask?
Yeah.
All right, thank you.
Okay. All right.
At Kennedy, we just had our first week of the new trimester, and it was very positive and energetic. Show choir had a terrific performance this weekend with a great showing, with great showing. A lot of hard work was put into making it great. Winter sports are off to a great start. Student government has been selling candy grams, and we'll be passing them out on Friday. We have an ugly sweater day, which is on Friday. Kennedy will be showing off the ugliest sweaters they can find. There's a holiday band concert on Thursday, the 15th. Student government is throwing a movie night on Wednesday, the 14th. Student government is, has officially decided to do a Sadie's Hawkins Dance on February 24th, and the theme will be Dancing Under the Snow. And today, Memorial Blood Center came in and students donated blood. And lastly, the last FASFA meeting was held today at Kennedy.
Thank you.
It's a prize for the best ugly sweater.
Glory.
We also know that.
Pride, school pride. All right, that brings us to our board member reports. Go ahead.
I'll go ahead. I just, I thought I'd make it short and sweet. I thought I'd take the opportunity to say thanks to all of our district members, and especially all of our community members, for making this year a successful year. Takes a lot of hard work to get the kids from A to B. There's a lot of work that goes on behind the scenes, whether you're driving your student to and from, helping somebody out as a tutor, whatever it is. It would take too much time to mention all the names. I just want to say thanks. I appreciate the energy and the effort that went into this past year.
Thank you. Anyone else? Been a slow couple weeks? Go ahead, Jim.
Sure, yeah, as was mentioned, this is the month to see all kinds of activities, sporting events, concerts, and everything else like that. So there's no opportunity lost if you want to do that from elementary schools all the way up. I was at the PTSA council meeting, and I just want to compliment them because it's a very involved group of parents involving all of the schools. It's really good to see the representatives of all the schools and being able to take information back. Special Education Advisory Committee, one of the goals that we have, it's a committee of parents and staff of special education children. One of the goals is to increase the membership of others, and I know this has been a goal ever since Dawn was on the program too, but we want to try and include more diversity, and we've even talked about maybe having a couple of transition students participate in the advisory committee meeting, so they can have a chance to see what it's all about and talk about a lot of the aspects of special education. We had a development, DAPE, presentation of all the activities that they have in our schools and the extracurricular activity schools, and for the development-adapted physical education classes, which go on during the day, and so many different aspects of it. It's just fascinating that we have that opportunity here in Bloomington. As was mentioned earlier, or maybe not, our clerical negotiations met, and we have a tentative agreement with our clerks. And then we participated, some of us participated in the Omar Bonderun Award, where Normandale, one of our very strong partners, was the recipient this year. And I stopped to chat with some of the realtors and friends at their seminar that they had the other day too, which is always good. That was a pretty positive thing. I don't think we got a report on that one, did we, Rick? Not yet, we haven't gotten a report back. Thank you. That's all. Need a drink of water.
Before I start on my stuff, I just want to address a little bit about the special ed advisory. You know, the issue there is it's difficult for parents, and all of our parents, to get to things in the evening. Many of our parents, you know, they have other obligations, but for that particular group, it's especially hard because, like, some of our groups that meet, we have childcare in the building for the parents, but we don't offer childcare for the special ed parents, I guess, because of the needs of their students to have that childcare in the building. It's difficult. Many years ago, there was a stipend offered for some of the parents that could not find or needed childcare to attend, so that they could use that to pay someone in their home. And, you know, many, many people, even though your child may be 15, if they have disabilities, they may not be able to be home alone, so it becomes a hardship even when they're in the transition program, adults, and many of them still can't be alone. So it's very difficult to find parents that can commit the time to serve in that. So I don't know if there's something that we can, you know, address there that would maybe help with that, as something that maybe we could discuss. And on to my events. I attended the Olson Elementary White Tiger Rally. This is, a lot of what's done there is recognizing students, kind of awards for students, part of their PBIS, their Positive Behavior Intervention and Support, so students are that, I guess, had recognition for the appropriate behavior, and are entered into a drawing, so students then win prizes from that. So it's very exciting, all the kids are excited about it. Also, they've been doing, and one of the little things to make it really fun, is they've been doing a little Minute to Win It, where teachers and students are involved in a little Minute to Win It contest at the end of the rally, so that seems to be the highlight of the whole rally. I was also very happy to see that, sitting next to me in the back, was several students and their staff from the SUN program that were there, you know, as part of being integrated into the whole school community there, so I was happy to see some of those students coming from the SUN program. And I know I've seen them in the classroom, but it was just nice to see the whole group, or large group, sitting there. Also, I attended the District Diversity Advisory Committee, and that was, there was a chance to talk about, teachers had a chance to talk about any needs or anything going on in their buildings. Then there was discussion about the Achievement and Integration Plan, and kind of what we heard tonight is that it's going to be for renewal. Discussion about the World's Best Workforce meeting tonight. And then there was also discussion about the equity audit that the district's doing, and also discussion about that it's actually, that the first thing is, is school board and cabinet, and I think the QCOM coaches and that, is that was first doing it, before it'll go to all the teachers, before they will go, so it'll start with the other people first, so. That was pretty much all there, so thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Nellie? Oh, Rick, I'm sorry.
I attended the Olson Band Concert, and Mr. Gopper thanked all the students for all their hard work, and thanked all the parents for getting them there on time and working with their students, but I wanted to thank Mr. Gopper for standing in front of those hundreds and hundreds of students every single day, listening to that wonderful music that they're making in sixth, seventh, and eighth grade, that maybe didn't start out so wonderful, but sticking in there with them and making it fun. And it was a really fun concert. They even had, he asked everyone before it started to download the Jingle Bell app on your phone, so when they played Jingle Bell, you'd shake your phone and it would ring a bell. And so it was very fun, so there was audience participation. So, yeah, I just wanted to thank the teachers that make our wonderful music programs a success.
Thank you. Anyone else? I'd just like to highlight that I attended the eighth-grade Nobel class at Valley View Middle, had an empty bowl event, where the kids made little ceramic bowls, and then they served wild rice soup and bread, and it benefited good in the hood. And they made their own soup, and it was, it was pretty interesting, very fun. Thank you. That brings us to the superintendent.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I have two announcements. First, I need a motion to establish a professional development session for the school board on January 9th at 6:00 PM in Room 601. The topic is equity briefings. May I have a motion, please?
Still moved.
Second.
Second, okay. All in favor of a professional development meeting on January the 9th, 2017, at 6:00 PM, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None.
Thank you. Winter break for students and teachers begin on December 19th through January 2nd. The school resumes on Tuesday, January 3rd. On behalf of the school board and administration, we wish the entire school community safe and happy winter break. Finally, kindergarten registration starts for the coming school year, 17-18, at the end of January. Your local elementary schools will be holding kindergarten registration. Please check with your local schools for dates and times for those events. And that concludes my report.
We're already talking about next year.
We're already talking, yes.
Is there anything else to come before the board this evening? Hearing none, this meeting is adjourned. Happy holidays. Thank you.